You have thirty seconds. You're right, you're right, no, you're right, you're right, okay. It makes me feel better. It is six o'clock.
Okay, we will now call this meeting to order, roll call please.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Present.
Commissioner Asper.
Present.
Commissioner Heinzerling.
Present.
Commissioner Lamore.
Present.
Commissioner Venzel.
Present.
Commissioner Swordout.
Present.
Commissioner Moore.
Present.
Commissioner Leavens.
Present.
Coram, present.
If you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Hoffman.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now Grace will lead us in our opening prayer.
Dear Lord, we are thankful for this day that you have given us, for its blessings, its opportunities, and for its challenges. We pray for strength and guidance for each day as it comes, for each day's duties, and for each day's problems. May we be challenged to give our best always, and may we be assured of your presence with us. Amen.
Amen.
Could I now get an approval of the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Lamore, supported by Heinzerling. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Showing none. Next is approval of minutes from the April one, two thousand twenty-five regular meeting. Could I get a motion, please?
I'll make the motion and waive the reading.
I'll second that.
Moved by Swordout, supported by Hoffman. Any additions, questions, or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We now enter into our first segment of public comment. Are there citizens in the audience that wish to address the board?
Illinois, two-two-five, Maywood, Monroe, Michigan. I just want to thank the commissioners for finally having the livestream up and running. Thank you.
Thank you. Others that wish to address the board. Seeing none, we'll move into resolutions, special tributes, and presentation. Item number one is a special tribute recognizing Dundee's varsity wrestling team, the Vikings, for a spectacular season. I will turn it over to Vice Chair Leavens.
Right. I read the special tribute recognizing Dundee varsity wrestling team, the Vikings. So whereas the Vikings varsity wrestling team won their eighth consecutive D-three state team championship on Saturday, February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five, as of March twenty-twenty-five, they hold the seventeenth all-time state championship title. And whereas during the entire MHSAA tournament, the Vikings wrestled seven teams, outscoring them by a combined total of five hundred and thirty-seven to thirteen points. In the final, Dundee defeated Yale seventy-four to zero, and after a seventy-two zip win over Allegen in the finals. Dundee also defeated Agama Heights seventy-five-six. The Vikings have three returning championships, and a total of fourteen wrestlers who qualified for the individual finals. At these finals, eight wrestlers won the individual championship, and whereas the members of the team include Josh Foster, Sam Haddix, Calvin Erwin, Scott Coleman, Mackenzie Matty, Braden Mason, Austin Miller, Stone Redman, Daniel Serrato, Anthony Tomazuski, Jesse Werthenberger, Jack Westlow, Ryan Williams, Wyatt Burns, Joe DeJonge, Logan Fuller, Lucas Fuller, Mason Katschor, Avery Lane, Ben Madalinski, Chance Murray, Colton Roy, Jeremy Armheim, Donnie Buffay, Jackson Byer, Braden Broderick, Blake Cosby, Mason Haynes, Price Johnson, Owen Madalinski, Hayden Nutt, Rococo Redman, Brian Sterling, Abe Bruck, Cole Katscher, Landon King, and Jackson Martin. And whereas special recognition is made for these student athletes who have dedicated themselves to the team's success and on the mat and in the classroom, as well as the co-head coach Nate Hall and Garrett Stevens. And whereas this victory is not just for the team members and coaches, but also for the parents, fans, and those involved in the wrestling program, as well as the entire Dundee school community. And in special tribute, therefore, this document is signed and dedicated on this April fifteen, two thousand twenty-five, in recognition and applaud for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five Dundee varsity wrestling team and its coaching staff for their outstanding compliments this season, and for continuing to bring pride to the county of Monroe. Be it resolved, Commissioner Hoffman, supported by Chairman Venzel and the rest of this board. If we have the coaches come up to accept the award, and then we'll additionally, if it pleases the teammates, as you've been here eight times, you should know how this works, take some photos for your yearbook.
Alrighty, smile. Three, two, one. Alrighty, and then I'm gonna give one close, just to be straight. Alrighty, perfect. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good job, guys.
Congratulations.
You know what I want to say to you, man, is fifty-five plus years ago, I wrestled at Central, and I still keep a connection with them young men today. And we're all older, so you guys has got a bond that you're gonna carry through like, you guys are all gonna be a team when you get, fifteen years later, you'll still be talking to each other and talking about matches, and it's gonna be great. It's gonna be great for you guys. Congratulations. Thank you.
And you guys are welcome to attend the rest of our meeting, but there probably may be, you know, other celebrity events you have to attend this evening, and places you want to be, so you're welcome to stick around, but if you have other places to be, we totally understand, because we have a couple other highlights, but...
Go for it.
Unless you're getting civics extra credit points for sticking around.
You talked them into it.
Yeah, I know. Well, I wanted to make some seating for some other folks that are standing in the back as well. It appears we've lost our popularity by more than half.
Okay, our next resolution is a resolution for proclaiming May as Motorcycle Awareness Month. I'll turn this over to Vice Chairman Leavens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is our resolution proclaiming the next month of May as Motorcycle Awareness Month. Whereas Monroe County has many citizens who are concerned about motorcycle safety while touring, during recreation, and daily transportation, and whereas the month of May is nationally recognized as month of motorcycles become more prevalent on our streets, and the need to be more aware of their presence is of the utmost urgency. And whereas due to pure Michigan advertising campaign and the modification of the Michigan helmet law, many of the state riders will be visiting our state and using our roads. And whereas an overwhelming number of car versus motorcycle accidents could have been avoided with due regard, respect, and awareness of motorcycles on the streets and intersections in Monroe County, and whereas the inclusion of motorcycle awareness provided by Abate of Michigan as a distinct part of the driver education curriculum in motorcycle rider education programs will help promote safe driving and motorcycle riding practices. And whereas it's the interest of our community and the citizen Monroe County to note the increase in the amount of motorcycle traffic as we enter the warm months to enable the reduction of accidents and injuries involving motorcyclists. Now therefore, be it resolved on this fifteenth day of April, two thousand twenty-five, Monroe County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim the month of May as Motorcycle Awareness Month in Monroe County, offered by myself and supported by Chairman Venzel and the rest of the commissioners. And I know that we have at least a couple people from Abate here in attendance to accept this proclamation and offer a couple brief words.
Thank you, Chris, appreciate it. And I will be brief. Pardon my throat, allergies are killing me. The biggest thing that we're working on right now, this will be our sixth year in a row, is undoing what the Republicans and the Democrats, in conjunction with our governor, did to motorcyclists under SB one, when they modified auto insurance in the state of Michigan. Motorcyclists are the only individuals in the state now not allowed to access their own healthcare in the event of an accident. We are bound by the law that whatever level of coverage the offending driver has on their insurance is all we're entitled to. That's it. We can't even access our own motorcycle insurance coverage. That was written into the law. We've been fighting it now for six years. The Republicans will not get it in committee. We cannot get it to the floor. It's killed in caucus. Mr. Leavens, or you know, Mr. Heinzerling, you're a member of Abate, Bill Lavoy, a member of Abate, are familiar with what we've been up against. We are bipartisan, but yet the only ones that are singled out under this law, if you're a pedestrian and have a car, in a wheelchair, have a car, on a skateboard, a bicycle, and have a car, and you're struck by a driver, you can go to your own auto insurance for medical coverage. On a motorcycle, you're not. I may be coming back to this board when our bill is introduced, seeking a consent resolution in support of our legislation. But thank you very much. Look twice, save a life.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next resolution is a resolution recognizing the MCOP for sixty years of service in Monroe County. I do want to turn it over to Commissioner Swordout for a minute. I know he's got some voice problems today, and I think Grace is gonna read the resolution, but he's been a long-serving member, and I just want to see if he wants to say a few things.
Well, it's been a pleasure being on this board. They work together so well, they think they have good far sight, their planning, their strategic planning, and that's why they got the Gold Tier Award earlier, top five centers in the country out of a thousand. So I think that speaks for itself. But now, sixtieth anniversary, and Grace, if you would read this, I'll have, I think, Stephanie's here? Okay, she'll come up and we'll get some pictures, too.
Alrighty. Whereas Monroe County has many citizens who are concerned, oh, sorry, that's the motorcycle one. Alright, whereas Monroe County Opportunity Program is chartered as the Community Action Agency that services the county of Monroe, Michigan. And whereas, MCOP is one of more than a thousand community action agencies across the United States under the umbrella of the National Community Action Partnership. And whereas, MCOP has been in operation as a private nonprofit corporation since June fourteenth, nineteen sixty-five, and in two thousand twenty-five is celebrating sixty years of service to Monroe County. And whereas, MCOP has been working for sixty years to achieve its mission that aims to reduce the effects of poverty by empowering individuals, strengthening communities, and mobilizing resources. And whereas, on June eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, MCOP was approved as a Gold Tier Organization by the Excellence Commission and the National Community Action Partnership Board of Directors, making it one out of only five community action agencies to achieve this designation all across the United States. Whereas, MCOP was celebrated sixtieth anniversary at a gala event on May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five, at six p.m. at the River Raisin Banquet Center during Community Action Month. And now therefore, the following resolution was duly made, seconded, and unanimously adopted. Be it resolved that the Monroe County Board of Commissioners acknowledges the meritorious work advanced by MCOP with regards to their sixtieth anniversary of service to the community and notable achievement of such. And be it further resolved that the Monroe County Board of Commissioners supports and appreciates MCOP, its staff, board, and volunteers for their dedicated service to the county of Monroe and citizens who reside in it. Be it further resolved that the foregoing resolution is in conformity with the county of Monroe, and that there are no provisions limiting the authority of the designated board to adopt the foregoing resolution. Special tribute offered by Commissioner Swordout and supported by Chairman Venzel and the rest of the board. You're gonna do pictures? Yeah. Awesome. Do you guys want to go in the middle for the board? Or do you want to say a few? I will do whatever you want. We can... I'm gonna give your phone back, so I'm not holding that. Okay. I will be fast, I promise. Good evening, Honorable Chairman and County Commissioner. Thank you so much for this wonderful tribute for our sixtieth anniversary. As it said in the tribute, we've been around since nineteen sixty-five. I celebrate my twenty-year anniversary as the Executive Director of MCOP in this year of two thousand twenty-five, so wanted to make sure you all had your personal invitation to our gala, which is Friday, May sixteenth, at the River Raisin Banquet Center. We'd love to see you, but as you know, MCOP has been working for sixty years to end poverty in Monroe County. We do that by meeting the greatest needs for low-income people, and that includes emergency food distribution, homeless services and veterans programs, aging and disability resources, our great work at the Opportunity Center with youth development programs and senior activities, housing quality and energy conservation, and specialized transportation. So we do all of that to eliminate barriers for low-income people and becoming self-sufficient, and I'm so proud to be part of such a wonderful organization. Thanks to Dave for being a wonderful board member for us, and our staff of over fifty people who work so hard each and every day to achieve our motto, which is helping people changing lives. So I'm gonna pass these on to you guys. We hope to see you there. Wait, we're up here? Yeah. Do you guys want to stand behind her?
We're a little shorter than the other guys were.
Ready? One, two, three. Alright. Alright, one, two, three. Perfect. Thank you.
Our next item is the presentation of two thousand twenty-four Monroe County Central Dispatch Annual Report by Central Dispatch Director Donna Cootie.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners.
Good evening.
Okay, I believe you all have a copy of the PowerPoint. I'm just gonna give an overview. You also should have the complete annual report. My first, I wanted to start first by saying this week is the week we recognize our dispatchers. It's the National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and I wanted to take a moment to thank our nine-one-one dispatchers here in Monroe for all the hard work that they do. So I will start off with highlighting that...
At the point this way? At the box. Okay.
So I'm gonna start by pointing out just a dispatcher spotlight of two of our dispatchers. The first is Supervisor Miller. She retired back in two thousand twenty-three, a twenty-five-year employee of Monroe County, career dispatcher. We are lucky enough to have her come back as a temporary part-time dispatcher. All the, if you can imagine, all the years of knowledge that she brings with her is invaluable. She was a mentor to me. She was my trainer when I came on in two thousand and eight, and is really a support system and continues to be for all of Central Dispatch. Our second dispatcher is Dispatcher Mindy Comet. She received the two thousand twenty-four Monroe Exchange Club Leadership Award. She is a newer employee, came on in two thousand twenty-one, rapidly became one of Dispatch's favorite employees, earned their respect quickly. She has a great personality, excellent work ethic, and really cares deeply about the work that she does. As of May of this year, she will be our next supervisor. So I just wanted to give a special recognition to two of our team members. So in two thousand twenty-four, you know, we're funded through the surcharge currently, and we receive two types of collection. One is through the local nine-one-one surcharge, and then we also receive state nine-one-one revenues. Thirty-six, just about three million, six hundred and sixty-nine thousand was received in two thousand twenty-four from the local revenues, and three hundred and twenty-eight thousand from the state nine-one-one revenues. Those revenues help support our staffing, the majority of our costs are for our dispatchers. They support and fund our dispatchers. We currently have sixteen budgeted dispatcher positions and six supervisor positions. Both supervisors and dispatchers run twelve-hour shifts, either six a.m. to six p.m. or seven a.m. to seven p.m. They are all on rotating on-call schedules. Our supervisors are on-call for a month at a time. Obviously, when they're not working, they are on-call. And our dispatchers rotate on a bi-weekly rotating on-call schedule, and it depends on how many are on their team, on what that rotation is. Obviously, twenty-four-seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, like other public safety agencies. They are both call taker and dispatcher. They do have a requirement to have twenty-four bi-annual continuing education credits that's required through the state, and they also receive twelve annual continuing education credits through their medical training. We have recently added a fire protocol, and there will also be continuing education credits for that. In two thousand twenty-four, six hundred and twenty-one, there's a collectively six hundred and twenty-one hours spent in training, and twelve thousand four hundred and ninety-three dollars was spent in training funds. Those training funds are separate from nine-one-one surcharge funds. Those are obtained through an application that we submit every year. Those funds have to be expended. If they are not expended, they are returned to the state. The surcharge funds and the training help us serve our community. As you can see from the wheel, we touch base with a lot of agencies within the county, some more frequently than others, and we work with them all in some capacity, whether it's mental health, fire departments, police, obviously, Health Department, Road Commission. We even touch base with Coast Guard, the hospitals, courts. At some level, in some way, we're reaching out to all the departments. In our dispatch operations, we use various technologies that are growing each year. There are just some screenshots of some of those technologies we use, more than just a phone and CAD. We're using different technologies that are out there, text to nine-one-one, rapid SOS, our GPS, they enhance our GPS capabilities, priority dispatch, which is our medical protocol, and will be our fire protocol. What, three words? You can Google any of these, it'll give you more information on what they do. It is quite pretty amazing, the technology that's out there and what they do. In two thousand twenty-four, these are, this is a list of our most currently used technology. In two thousand twenty-four, we did enter into an agreement to upgrade our radio consoles, adding additional positions. Our call processing equipment was also end-of-life, it needed a server upgrade, equipment upgrade. With that, we added some additional positions, some call, basically call status lighting, lets us know what the other dispatchers are doing, what type of call they are on in the room. Our Mevo phones, which are backup nine-one-one phones that are provided through our nine-one-one vendor, currently at no cost to us. Those were upgraded and replaced by the phone vendor. And then we've also added the license plate reader flock system through the Sheriff's Office, which is used by other public safety agencies in the county as well. With all the technology that has assisted us in answering one hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred and ninety-six total calls, that's nine-one-one calls, text to nine-one-one, and non-emergency calls. I've broken those down into separate categories. Our texts to nine-one-one are slowly increasing. It's still low use, but it is slowly increasing year to year. We do prefer, you know, the slogan is, "Call if you can, text if you can." We'd rather talk to somebody in person rather than text, but we do find that the text is very valuable. It offers translation service for us. It also offers us a way to contact a person back. We get, the call volume totals here include abandoned calls. We get an extreme amount of abandoned calls, and a lot of those are, they're missedials. They are basically hang-ups before there's an actual connection into nine-one-one. We are required to call those back, and we can do that by phone, or we can do that in a text capacity. These totals do not include our callbacks, because those are just incoming calls. Of the nine-one-one calls that we receive, this is a breakdown of how we receive those calls and what format. As you can see, landline phones are the one point one-five percent. Those are your wired phone lines. Those are near nonexistent. The voice over internet, your cable phone, those are two point nine-four percent. There, or, do I have that wrong? I'm sorry, can't see. I'm sorry. Hold on a minute. Oh, I'm sorry. Text to one-nine-one-one is one point five. Two point nine is your landline. Eight point two-six is your VoIP, and then, of course, wireless makes up eighty-seven point six-four percent of all the calls that we receive. So landline is still going away, it's way down, it continues to drop year to year. AT&amp;T has expressed that eventually they will be phasing that out completely. So, and to get it is impossible. So if you were to request it probably in your service area now, you wouldn't be... So if you were to request it probably in your service area now, you wouldn't be able Further charts on the course of over five years, just a little breakdown of how the trend has gone over time. Last year, we did have a little bit of spike in our 911 calls. Couldn't really pinpoint what that would be for. We did have some tornado events, not enough to contribute to the 10,000 difference in calls that averaged to about 1.6 calls per hour. But as you can see, for the previous years, they're pretty much on point, on a similar line. We always do tend to get more admin calls than we do 911 calls. And again, these are just incoming, not outgoing. As you can see from, for text to 911, there's been a significant increase over the past five years. Of all the calls that we've taken, those calls have produced 105,000, just over, calls dispatched to police, fire, and EMS. This total does include self-initiated calls by law enforcement, and these numbers are duplicated in some capacity because we do dispatch multiple departments to a call, and they're broken down by depart, these are broken down by department. At the bottom, you'll see MCCD, that's Central Dispatch. Those are calls that we handle internally where we don't actually, we do provide some sort of service to the public, but a resource isn't necessarily sent out to them or generated. That's pretty much all I have. If anybody has any questions for me.
Would members have questions?
I just saw in your appendix here, you have Joanna Yule Supervisor. Is she still Supervisor in Dundee or isn't it? Roger, no? Is she still on the board?
She is not, but it was reflective of 2024.
Oh, okay. Is she still on the board?
No.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the 2024 Annual Report to President O'Neal.
Support. Moved by Levens, supported by Huffman. Are there additional questions on the motion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Heinzerling?
Yes.
Commissioner Lemoore?
Yes.
Commissioner Benzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Swordout?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Leavens?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Asper?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Our next item is a presentation of the 2024 Monroe County Sheriff's Office Annual Report by Sheriff Troy Goodenough.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to present the Sheriff's Office Annual Report. This is my fourth time being in front of you. You all have a copy of the full report, and at the end of my presentation this evening, the full report will be uploaded to the County of Monroe, particularly the Sheriff's Office website, to be made available to the public. I hope our annual report demonstrates the hard work, dedication of the women and men of the Monroe County Sheriff's Office as we serve the citizens of Monroe County. As noted throughout the report, 2024 was a great year for the Sheriff's Office. Throughout the entire year, much was accomplished. I'll start out by telling you, the Sheriff's Office handled over 41,000 calls for service in 2024. If you look back at the many years of historical daddy, you'll see that it's on the rise. We continue to aggressively hire, recruit, retain valued, hard-working employees who are dedicated to the citizens of Monroe County in carrying out the goals and objectives of the Sheriff's Office. We hired 15 deputies and 13 corrections officers in 2024. We created a recruitment video that is played at the Phoenix Theater that is, according to their statistics, viewed by over a quarter of a million people. I can tell you firsthand, we have hired and received applicants as a result of that investment. We continue to maintain an aggressive training program. Why am I so concerned about training? With proper training and techniques, it can reduce our liability and shield us from problems down the road, but more importantly, create our professional organization that delivers services to the public. Some of the topics that we covered in our training curriculum were animal cruelty, women in law enforcement, Corrections Academy, tactical horsemanship for our Mounted Division, the Freedom of Information Act training, DEA social media investigations, advanced school resource training, but more importantly, is de-escalation for all of our officers so that we encounter situations with people that suffer from mental health illness or situations that pose a risk with violence and communication. We're able to de-escalate that situation without resulting in force. We created our Victim Services Unit. They were utilized 10 times last year. They've been used numerous times already this year. Nine of our valued employees retired. Eight of our employees received letters of recognition. We distributed 991 Narcan kits alone from the vending machine in the Sheriff's Office lobby. And I think it's worth noting, I was here years ago, we were the first county in the state of Michigan to put a vending machine in the Sheriff's Office lobby. We had 342 evaluations of inmates in the jail, incarcerated individuals, for medication-assisted treatment. Goes along with the plan and our program for opioid utilization of the opioid funds. 29 inmates registered and participated in the GED program with a zero recidivism rate by the individuals that participated. Again, another valuable program that we can show good return on our investment. And it's important to note that we partner with the Monroe Public Schools with this program at the Learning Bank. Over 1,724 students graduated from DARE. We received a $12,599 grant from the Community Foundation to fund Viper Task Force. As I said earlier, all our employees were trained in the duty to intervene. That includes the entire staff, corrections and uniform services. We purchased a new watercraft for our Marine Division dive team so that we can get into areas with shallow water. We purchased and trained our staff on 40-millimeter less-lethal firearms. They deploy a rubberized object to combat individuals with knives and other non-lethal, or I should say, non-firearms. Again, it gives us another layer of ability to de-escalate resulting to lethal force. Purchased PPE equipment for every officer individually. We also equipped every patrol car with a ballistic shield, a red dot sights for their patrol rifles, ballistic panels, and helmets for every officer in the Uniformed Service Division to increase their layer of protection in these violent times that we face from time to time. I don't have to go back and tell you what we faced on December 28th of last year. We hired a third animal control officer. We see the tremendous value in that, and I'll give you an example with the Animal Control Division. In 2023, in Frenchtown Township, we had, we handled less than 100 calls for service related to animal control. Last year, we handled 438 calls for service in Frenchtown related to animal control. So with that third officer, we can do a better job in preventing abuse and neglect and not just respond to the after effect. We opened up a new Frenchtown substation on December 5th. I know a majority of you are there, but that was a great investment from Frenchtown Township and our men and women. We continue to partner with DTE and Grado Steel, along with the City of Monroe, to clean the Front Street and I-75 road project. We implemented a tether program last year. For those of you who don't know, individual goes to court on Friday, the judge sets bond, and it requires a tether. Historically, after 2 o'clock in the afternoon, there was no way to get that tether equipped or that inmate equipped with that tether. So that means that inmate stayed with us until Monday. I said, not only does this expose the county to liability, but if we have an inmate that's suffering from substance abuse, mental health, and needs treatment, we may not always, with our jail programs, get them to where they need to be. Let's get them back out into the community. So I took it upon ourselves that we now install those tethers. We installed 162 tethers last year for individuals that normally would have been in our jail for three additional days, and we saved the county $10,530. We partnered with the City of Monroe, who added a, City of Monroe Public Service Department, who added a full-time detective to our Viper unit. Our jail garden harvested over 4,550 pounds of vegetables, which we donated to MCOP, the Oaks of Righteousness, and other nonprofit organizations in the county. We partnered with Monroe Charter Township to purchase a speed sign, portable speed sign, which we move frequently around the township. I can tell you that the return on that investment has been valuable. We don't get the speed complaints because when we get them, we put the sign there, and then we push all the data out to the public to know what's truly going on in their community. Our red shirt program, we collected 675 bags of trash. And I'll tell you, we only spent about three months picking up trash just because of staffing of that unit. On behalf of the Sheriff's Office, we look forward to 2025. We want to continue our de-escalation training, cultural diversity, and mental health first aid for all of our employees. I'm optimistic that come January 1st, we'll be full staff. Again, I'm optimistic we'll get there. We create, we're in the process of creating our Family Services Unit, which will benefit the inmates incarcerated in Monroe County Jail. We're going to continue plumbing updates at the main jail, installation of a new generator. As you know, our records division, we were fortunate enough this year to go 24/7 already. We see the value in that and to the citizens of Monroe County. We're purchasing new equipment for our Mounted Division, Teams Instruction for all our School Resource Officers. Obviously, you know, in December, we'll take delivery of our new Incident Command Vehicle. We were able to, we're going to, we're putting the heat in installation in our storage building. We're partnering with Resort District Authority, Frenchtown Township, Monroe Charter Township to add additional flock cameras. We're going to continue our partnership with MDOT to keep these freeways clean. We're adding a full-time Viper, or detective to our Viper unit, and we partnered with the City of Monroe to create a civil disturbance trailer with the equipment in it. If we have a situation, we'll have between 60 and 90 sets of gear that we can respond to at the office, you can gear up and handle whatever needs them. And we're adding two, which we've, you know, we already done for 25, is added two additional SROs to Bedford Township. And I can tell you, I've been in the community a number of times in South County, and I can't tell you the positive communication and comments that we have received due to the visibility of them, SROs in those school buildings and around them during the day. As a sheriff, I promise to continue to strengthen our relationship with the men and women of the Sheriff's Office, engage further with our citizens so that together we may overcome any challenges we face, strengthen the bonds with our community partners while earning their trust and confidence in the Sheriff's Office and its operations. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Make a motion.
Support.
Moved by Heinzerling, supported by Levens. Are there questions or comments on the Annual Report?
Yeah, that's, good job, Troy. I just want to say, our neighbor next door, over there in Wayne, they are down 300 officers, and most of their employees are forced to run two overtime shifts a week, double shifts. They're hurting that bad. So we're fortunate to have who we got. I know you're doing a good job recruiting now, so. Yep, and we've got a lot of good candidates, and we're not getting too much into the weeds. We have seven scheduled to go to the academy in May, eight in July, and if everything works out, we'll send three in January in preparation for our 25 retirement. So I'm confident we'll get where we need to be and even provide what I say is better service to all our citizens.
And then for the laypeople, the SROs, the School Resource Officers that are providing those deputies to the schools during the school time and the mixed advantages, when the schools close, those same folks are on the, on the road during the time when call volume is up and the schools are closed.
Yeah, and if I could expand on that a little bit, by Chairman Levens, when I saw the Office of Sheriff, I said I wanted to put an SRO in every school. That was something I set to do the first four years. And you as Commissioners that have been here for a while know, we accomplished that in two. And we have added additional Resource Officers. We now have a total of two in Airport, and with the addition of the two that we added this year, that gives us five in Bedford. Every school in Bedford Township has an SRO. Now, to go along with that a little bit, the elementary schools don't stay in them schools. They're there for, when his children arrive, they're there for lunch, and then they're at dismissal. And between that time, they stay within a three-mile radius of that elementary school doing traffic enforcement to slow the vehicles down to continue to protect our children. And yes, Mr. Levens, the, when the school is out, or the snow days or training days, they then report to the road to bolster that enforcement capabilities. And we value that partnership.
Just a quick comment and question, excuse me. First of all, thank you very much, Sheriff. I really do appreciate, even when you came into office, how you said you were going to police, being visible. I think that's so effective in a community of being visible to the community, being out there policing, doing those things. And obviously, we see it in your results, and truly is, you know, something that's very noble, ministers of peace, protecting the righteous and bring justice to the evil doers. I appreciate what you do. One quick question here. I'm looking at the average daily population over the last 10 years, and I see a lot of red there where you exceed capacity. Is that an issue that you're kind of monitoring and looking to the future of, you know, there's some, looks like there's some years there where we had more inmates than we had beds?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay.
And, you know, I'm sure you have a document that may have been shared with you to address that issue. You'll see there's peaks and valleys, right? And like I tell everybody, we saw valleys when the courts in the state of Michigan, and I know Mr. Levens probably knows this better than anybody, when they brought up bond reform, right? Where they said, everybody gets out of jail, we don't want to have cash, and we saw our inmate population trend down. Started trending back up, and then we come upon COVID. And you know what the government did in COVID? They didn't want people incarcerated, so we started trending down. And yes, we're trending back up. And I don't see any light at the end of the tunnel going in another direction. For instance, the main jail last Monday was at 91% capacity, and inmate dormitory was at 87% capacity. By rule of thumb, you don't ever want to be over 90% capacity because it gives you no leeway to move with those inmates. So this is a topic that we are going to have to have some conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lemoore?
Yes.
Commissioner Benzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Swordout?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Leavens?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Asper?
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzerling?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. We'll now move into finance matters. Item number one, payment of the 41625 accounts payable, current claims report in the amount of $1,301,864.42. Sue.
Good evening. On page number one, vendor number 20877, BizStream, has some monthly software licensing for the youth center and juvenile software. Vendor number 60009, Family Counseling Service, February and March supervised visitation services provided through front of the court. Page number two, vendor number 131056, Mason Oceana 911, that's Central Dispatch Training. Vendor number 190001, Semcox, annual membership dues for the county. And on page number five, vendor number 903011, Kennedy Industries, it's a drain project cost paid through the Drain Commission, and that's the end of my list.
I think I'll ask for a motion now and then.
I'll make that motion in a second.
Moved by Huffman, supported by Lemoore. Now, are there questions on the motion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Chairman Benzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Swordout?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Leavens?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Asper?
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzerling?
Yes.
Commissioner Lemoore?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sue.
Item number two is a letter dated April 10, 2025, from Mr. Michael Basonic, Administrator Chief Financial Officer, submitting a letter of intent with Erie Township for an infrastructure project, deploying American Rescue Plan Act funds to promote economic development in Erie Township. Could I get a motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
Support. Moved by Swordout, supported by Levens. Now, are there questions on this motion, or comments, or concerns? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Swordout?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Leavens?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Asper?
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzerling?
Yes.
Commissioner Lemoore?
Yes.
Commissioner Benzel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now, we'll move into consent agenda. Item one, approval of non-claims. Could I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Support. Moved by Lemoore, supported by Levens. Are there questions on this item? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Leavens?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Asper?
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzerling?
Yes.
Commissioner Lemoore?
Yes.
Commissioner Benzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Swordout?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under communications, item one, letter dated April 10, 2025 from Mrs. Mary Gantos, Managing Attorney, Monroe County Indigent Defense, submitting the fiscal year 2026 Michigan Indigent Defense Commission grant application including compliance plan and cost analysis in the amount of $3,663,943.66. The county's local cost share match is $217,053.37, providing a total program cost of $3,880,997.3. The county match is included in the 2025 budget for the period October 1 through December 31, 2025. The balance of the state fiscal year match, January 1 through September 30, 2026, will be included in the 2026 budget.
Make that motion.
Support.
Moved by Huffman, supported by Swartout. Now, comments or questions or concerns?
Chairman, I'd like to add, if we could, to that motion, a motion to approve the grant application submission to make it conditional upon county administration submitting a written request and justification for a delivery model change to a public defender office and a request for a multi-level staff review to be considered by the MIDC Commission. This written request must be submitted no later than Friday, April 18, 2025.
Those who made the motion, are you willing to adjust the motion? Who support it? Commissioner Swartout, do you support this?
Can we have that done by then?
I didn't hear you.
I said, can that actually be done by then?
I'll.
Because he said it was just a few days from now, didn't he?
Correct. It is Friday.
This is just the request, so it isn't.
Correct.
Actually, some of these deadlines have recently come to our attention being the, and so candidly, I was going to mention this, appropriate time on further board action that the feasibility request that we had discussed in the operations committee be tabled, for lack of a better term, because this new development would render it unnecessary. And this comes on the heel, and I keep forgetting the director's name from MIDC.
Nicole Walters.
Pardon?
Walters, Nicole Walters.
Nicole Walters, who sent an email that was forwarded by our clerk to all of our attention indicating that a feasibility study is not how you start out. It's how you end up after you've made this request. So the request is just the simple ask that, hey, we're looking at a different direction and we want to formally bring it to your attention. So it isn't more than I understand it than a simple addition to our grant due diligence with the ask as Commissioner Moore reported into, indicating that we were requesting for delivery model change to the defender's office.
No, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Are there additional concerns? Yes, Commissioner Asper.
Yes, I know probably eight years ago, when I first got on this board, I looked into public defender and then I reviewed it again and it just seems like the entire US is having funding problems with public defenders, both at the state and the national level. There just isn't the money for it. The other thing is, is I think it would be a lot more expensive than what we have now because we would have to have the offices, there's just so many other things. And I did check out the amount, you know, at typical places for public defenders that are similar to our area and it was a good $20,000 more than was mentioned at the operations committee. And then, of course, it's going to be another 20,000 or plus more for, you know, all the different benefits and so on and so forth. So I realize that you want to do this, but I'm just concerned that if we add this amendment, that that will lead to that feasibility study. And as it was discussed at the operations committee, that feasibility study was like, okay, this is how we're going to prove that we really need this. And I really felt like a feasibility study is supposed to tell you whether it's feasible or not. And it looked like in that letter that we got that really places aren't looking for public defenders unless they're having difficulty being in compliance. So they're kind of forced into these other methods. So I'm just a little concerned about, you know, spending more money on a study when I think this will add, you know, a lot more expense to the county. We don't, we barely have enough room where we are and so I'm just saying my concern for that.
Mr. Chairman, I want to be clear, I'm going to ask that that study that we asked for be tabled. I want the record to be clear that I'm not asking for that study to go forward. So Commissioner Asper's EO comments are understood and I will be asking for that again to be tabled for the time being.
Mr. Chairman, really, the only issue I have here is that amendment to the motion is assuming that everyone is in support of the public defender's office. That is a huge issue that every commissioner should have the right to debate on and then go back to the constituents and talk to them about that. And by saying, hey, you need to approve this money for this program, but also we're going to attach this issue to it, to where we're saying, we all agree when we haven't even discussed it as a board fully, I would have to be a no vote on that. And it's combining two separate things together and I don't really like doing that. That's one of the reasons why tonight I also asked that we could go through separately the consent agenda and look at each one. I really don't want to become Washington DC where we bundle 15 horrible things together with two good things and then if you don't vote for it, shame on you. So that would be my only concern with that amendment. I don't mind having the discussion about public defender's office, but I would like to have that separately where we can, we can all have a vote on that and not attaching it to revenue for the indigent defense.
Additional comments or questions or concerns?
I got one thing to say, I think it's going to make us more honest. We're going to be able to see where that money's going. Right now, we got firms out there that's running wild. We got one we're investigating now that's 600,000. That's a lot of tax money that's paying on possibly one case where if we get it public like we were looking at, it's going to, I mean, that's my, that's my put in. I think it's going to make us more.
I agree with you, I just think we should have that separately.
More transparent, too.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's it.
Commissioner Swartout.
My understanding going forward, to go to a public defender, it has to be cost justified also. So there's some safeguards that are in there.
This is just, in my mind, this is just a first step. We have to have, we have to ask before we can look into it. Okay? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Levens.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Point of order. We, we need to vote on the amendment first and then we vote on this because you just added, you know, you were supporting an amendment toward it. Was there a second for that amendment or not?
The maker and the support agreed to the amendment, so there's no vote necessary.
Okay, so you have added the amendment onto it? Okay, thank you for that.
Okay.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Asper.
No.
Commissioner Heinzlering.
Yes.
Commissioner Lamoore.
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel.
Yes.
Commissioner Swartout.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
No.
Our next item is a letter dated April 10, 2025 from Mr. Andrew Clark, Museum Director, requesting approval to submit a grant application for up to $50,000 to begin the upgrade of exhibit cases within the Monroe County Museum. The grant requires a 30% match from the museum system millage. Could I get a motion, please?
I'll make that motion in a second.
Moved by Huffman, supported by Lamoore. Are there questions on this motion? Comments, concerns? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Asper.
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzlering.
Yes.
Commissioner Lamoore.
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel.
Yes.
Commissioner Swartout.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Levens.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we move into all the items that were covered on the operations committee that we're going to address one at a time. Number one is the Property Assessed Clean Energy Pace Program presentation. Suggested action is board discretion, is there a motion?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion to support a resolution amending the resolution of August 20, 2019, approving the establishment of a property assessed clean energy pace program. And move by the Monroe County Board of Commissioners to amend the resolution of August 20, 2019, to establish the property assessed clean energy pace program and to adopt the Lean and Green Michigan Pace Program Report, replacing the previous program report. And move that the pace administrator shall be Lean and Green Michigan and the pace authorized official shall be the county administrator.
Is there support?
I'll second that.
Moved by Lamoore, supported by Huffman. Are there questions? We do have Mr. Levin here. You would like him to give a brief overview of what was presented at the operations committee? Yes.
So as I recall, we addressed the pace program a number of years ago and we voted against it. Part of my concern was that the money that is borrowed goes on the person's assessment, goes on their taxes and it can be up to 25 years. So these people could be paying for something for basically the amount of time that is the life of whatever it is that they're paying for. And I don't like to put people who, these are people that can't get their own loans. I really don't like putting them in a position that they could possibly lose their house. And I just think there are so many other programs out there right now that we could connect them up with. We just have a lot less cost for electricity and so forth with our new, you know, bulbs and all this other stuff. But I just think that there are some other programs that we could help people use without putting something on their assessment and on their taxes that could cause other problems later.
Okay. Additional comments? Yes, Commissioner Swartout.
Well, my understanding on our agenda was this, there was no action needed tonight.
The.
The board has board discretion.
Whether or not there was action listed or not, it doesn't matter. I mean, the board can do what they want when we get to the full meeting.
Yeah, I would just say we should probably be concerned as well, too, because what you're doing is you're taking a lump of money, you're borrowing against it, you're putting it on the tax roll, then making the county the first lien. And I don't know if we really want to get into the repossession business anymore than we are for tax liens. I don't know, maybe you can talk to our treasurer about that. When the gentleman was here at the operations committee, you do have people that default. You talk to some commercial lenders, they don't necessarily like it. If you're putting that loan above theirs and the lien placement on the deed, I think that's why we didn't want to do it in 2019. And I'm just wondering, since most of us were on that board then, what has changed for those who are in support of this?
Well, one of the things is we did go alongside, I didn't want to put too much, you know, effort and, you know, correcting different commissioners, but we didn't abandon it, Commissioner Asper. We went it alone and attempted our own attempt at this, hoping it would attract some attention. Unfortunately, we just didn't have that, you know, that background and network that the, you know, the current group through the, and let me hear it, the Lean and Green Michigan Pace Program administrators have. And they spoke additionally to the default and the gentleman was, he said, yes, we've encountered some of this, but they put in investment, remember? Part of the pace program is your, and it isn't, you know, for people that can't afford financing, it's that it's favorable financing because it has that green component. So they're getting better rates if I'm not, you know, mistaken. And so the properties are improved. So what the gentleman shared with is, yeah, some folks, you know, have run into trouble, but these are improved properties and the banks are on the hook, other people. And so there were quick recoveries from what it was described to us because, you know, one, they wanted to see the investment succeed. And there are other people in line saying, hey, if, you know, proprietor number one doesn't have the, you know, the economic, you know, fortune, what have you, there's another person that would, you know, love to step in their shoes and have this improved property. And so we're pretty much assured that it hasn't fallen into any county hands for officiating, you know, foreclosure of that. It's just that time investment and they were candid, listen, you know, there's going to be some, you know, effort on the treasurer, whoever the different partners are, to make the program a success. But that success means an economic driver. It means another tool in the box for businesses to have, you know, updated energy to their business for a favorable rate. So it was a win-win and it doesn't cost the county anything to implement it other than maybe some time resources on down the road and it could potentially be an economic driver. And I know that we had Commissioner Moore, the Y that was looking at this, but because it was a governmental entity, they unfortunately didn't, you know, fit the metrics to qualify. But for our private people, it doesn't cost the county anything else. It's a, another opportunity to drive economic growth, you know, good jobs, you know, better, you know, infrastructure. And so I'm a strong yes. We tried it, it didn't work. Now let's let the experts that are tried, true and tested bring it in and make it a success. Especially when it doesn't cost us anything.
Yeah, I'm not concerned about the cost and I know you know how deeds work and liens work, is it puts us on first lien. We become the collector of that debt as a tax. So we jump above any bank, any equity line of credit and I don't want to be in the business of foreclosing on businesses that can't pay a loan. And I'll tell you what, most lenders don't want to be in the business of getting jumped on the deed to first lien. So I would just say be wary of that.
I think now we got to call the expert.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. So first of all, hi, thanks a lot for allowing us to be here. This is super healthy. This discussion happens at every single county commission or in a few cases, city councils and township, you know, township meetings. And I want to start by kind of supporting what Commissioner Asper said. This issue of like a homeowner or a condo owner being in a situation like this came up when the state debated adopting a pace statute, which they would have, they'd had to do for a county to be able to even talk about this. And we eliminated homes from this because it, just for the exact reason you said. So the only thing you can use pace for in Michigan is commercial industrial property. It's got to be a nonprofit or for-profit commercial industrial property. No houses, no government buildings. So that is really a point well taken. And also, Commissioner Moore's point is very good. We wrote the statute so that the primary lender or the mortgage holder, any bank, has veto power over, a pace loan cannot be established by you, no matter what you want to do, if the bank that holds the lien on the property doesn't consent to it. So why would they? And they've consented. So in Michigan, you know, I started this, it was kind of, my wife thought I was crazy, you know, and it took a long time frankly to get it going. But today, there's 60 local governments covering 80% of Michiganders are in our program. And we've done 87 projects of over $300 million collectively. And there's not been one pace project done. There's another county along with Monroe, you did establish a pace program. You have one, it's active, it's just that it's never been used. And what, the reason I'm really standing here is a developer in the county that's worked with us in other places said, hey, I want to do a retroactive financing of $4 million or something in my, you know, for my, this is the gardens of Carlton, right? Does anybody know what this newish retirement facility? So this is the kind of, the economic driving that Commissioner Levens was talking about. They want to do a $4 million financing so they can go do their next project. And this is just American capitalism, you know, and you're doing a tiny little thing. How many property tax bills do you have in the county? Tens of thousands, I don't know, many thousands. We've only done 87 projects in the whole state of Michigan. So this is an infinitesimal addition to any county's, you know, property tax load. And no, the county actually isn't on the hook for it. Because all, we even have, in Michigan, the way we do it is, when we create a pace project, when it closes, that your authorized official, who would be the county administrator, signs it, you know, signs the thing. And, but it doesn't, the county doesn't even have to do the administrative work of, you know, collecting the money and giving it to the lender. We have a direct bill. So we do all the work basically of creating it, driving it. The really only work, as Commissioner Levens was talking about, is like Sean here and your economic development folks, I'm going to tell you, our experience has been in the counties where the chambers of commerce, the economic development folks, the, you know, whatever groups an area has that work on economic development, if they know about it, if they, you know, come to us and say, hey, we think we have a project here, it happens more. So it's just part of the kind of economic ecosystem of those counties and it's more effective. Of the $308 million of projects we've done, there's been zero, first of all, you pay us nothing ever. We only ever get paid, we eat what we kill. We only get paid when a deal closes and the economic actors, you know, we get a little fee, 2% or less if it's bigger on the project and that's the only way we ever make money. No taxpayer money is in this ever. And of the 87 deals, no county has ever paid one cent or, you know, actually taken over a property. There was. There was some, you know, some people have been late on their taxes, right? They've been, and there have been some steps in foreclosures, but there's never been one that went to the county. So, it's been really successful. And it's just basically the market. When a property owner in Monroe County wants to do something to save money by having reduced energy costs, and a contractor says, yeah, I would make money on that job, and a lender says, yeah, I'll lend the money, private lender says all the money, a deal happens. If that doesn't happen, nothing happens and it never causes the taxpayers anything anyway. Yes, sir?
That's a particular question that I have. If you say it qualifies for energy things, are you going to the Department of Energy to get the money available for different upgrades like that? Do you coordinate that with all the people that you work with?
Yeah, it's not only that, it's historic tax credits, right? It's TIPS, any other kind of money that they can get or, you know, if they're doing geothermal or something that gets federal tax credits, this can be combined with all that. They're basically financing the delta, whatever's left after they get those other incentives. So, they can, they can take advantage of any other program and it kind of works in. Really what this is, it's nothing about people who can't get a loan, right? This is people who are like, the most expensive money is equity, right? What they have to get from themselves or investors. The next most is mezzanine debt. And then they're scrabbling for all that stuff to fill it in, right? Or get a bank loan. But this is just way cheaper. The PACE lenders, it's just a market, right? They charge the 10-year T note plus X. We run an open market, so a property owner can use any lender they want. And they compete. And so, it's a favorable, as Commissioner Levens was saying, it's just favorable financing to help people do the deals they want to do, whether it's a retrofit or a gut rehab or a new construction. To do new construction, they have to do above code. So, what this retirement, evidently this retirement community, you know, they did above code on LED lights or insulation or, right? Whatever it was, a white roof, I don't know what they did, but they have to have an ASHRAI Level 2 audit is what we require to prove the energy savings. And that's all part of the deal, yes?
Right, but a big part of that component, all those grants that they can apply for and get, they can take to the bank to help finance at a cheaper rate.
Yeah, they, yeah, I mean.
Like the one you're talking about up there, are they getting any HUD money, $25,000 per apartment, for example?
I have no idea. I don't know. I will tell you though, that we are approved for HUD properties, we're the third state. We're the very first state to close a USDA financed. That was in Montcomb County, in Greenville. So, we're all over the state, you know, there's 83 counties in this state. And the vast majority of the counties that are in our state are, you know, rural or up north, Antrim County, all over the state, three in the UP. And generally, this is just totally not political. It's just a pro-business play and for nonprofits, actually. There's a big church that did it recently in Ottawa, Ottawa County's first PACE, this project was a big church that took over some warehouse. And so, they repurposed it and they did all this energy efficient stuff. And they got some of the money they needed through this. Just practical.
And so, Mr. Levin, do you foresee a good partnership with Monroe County Business Alliance?
I do. I mean, we've been, you know, we had, we met with them and we're excited to work with them. Really, it's, you kind of get, you get out what you put into it, is my experience. And so, it's diverse, it's weird. Wayne County is by far the biggest. So, that's like the big city, right? And they've done in some suburbs. But Grand Travers County is huge in this. Ingham County, you've done, you've seen projects in Antrim and Montcomb and all kinds. So, you know, it just, I do think it could be really big here. But it's, you know, we just, we do the projects that people want to do.
Additional questions? Yes?
I guess my concern is, when we had the first presentation and we saw all these buildings that were done over, I asked a question then about the Department of Energy grants and stuff. The answer was, I don't know. I just got another I don't know answer. Are they getting HUD money for this? I would think that these developments, you guys would know what you're getting from where.
Well, so, we're not the, we're not the property owner, right? And we're not, so, when, what we know is that the PACE, they have a capital stack and they, right, in a project, and they get money from different incentives and different things. We, well, we have a checklist of 142 items we've developed, as your administrator, if you were to join us, that we make sure every item is, you know, proper and meets the statutory requirements. And this is why it's hard for a county to kind of do it on its own. But so, we, on a given project, when it closes, we know a great deal about each of those projects. And I could give you, on any project we've closed, a big file on the whole, you know, details of their financing and so forth. But in general, it's hard to generalize about, I mean, we've had some that have had probably every kind of incentive, you know, here or there. So, I mean, I think there's no, it's totally transparent, you know, and there's full information on it. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Without any additional comments, roll call, please.
Commissioner Asper?
Yes.
Commissioner Heinrichling?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamore?
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Swartout?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
No.
Commissioner Levens?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Our next item is a letter dated March 17, 2025, from Mr. David Robinson, Monroe City Manager, requesting a $1 million contribution to the West Elm Avenue Rail Grade Separation Project for the remaining unfunded local match requirement. Could I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Hoffman, supported by Lamore. Now, we'll let Mr. Robinson address the board.
Honorable Chair, honorable Commissioners, it's my pleasure to be able to appear in front of you again. I believe that I got some good feedback from many of you after the presentation on Thursday. And I brought today a quick PowerPoint to kind of just give more facts as more facts were asked. And so you understand, this is a railroad project because in our city and in our surrounding areas, we have three Class 1 railroads that traverse through our city. They carry eight to 13 trains per day each. So, what that says in our east-west thoroughfares, those thoroughfares are blocked every day at some point, each one of them, eight to 13 times per day, which creates serious significant delays due to the stopped trains and the uncertainty of travel times. It also, it's also a challenge and hampers emergency response. If the emergency response happens to be east and the call is to the west and there's trains, and I know that our dispatch does a wonderful job letting the respondents, whether it's police or fire, know where the tracks are clear, et cetera, but it's still, it's still a problem. And it could imagine, it could cause problems for the emergency response and access, even for those non-emergency responses by first responders, but also for people that need to go to the hospital that tend to take themselves. So, how this came about is in the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, the bipartisan infrastructure law, which was passed in November of 2021, it provided $550 billion in funding for 22 through 26. Railroad Crossing Elimination Program was for large-scale rail projects. The first call for the projects was due in June of '22. Submissions were due in October. So, as a city, we needed to move quickly. Well, we felt we would be competitive in the first round, so we decided to go for it. The focus needed to be on a shovel-ready project. Well, the first feasibility study of our grade separations was in 1995, especially on West Elm. And it was updated for cost purposes in 2008. We considered various projects on the east side, but it lacked railroad buy-in at that time, along with greater complications than the west side. And we knew we had to make this quick because we wanted to be in that first round of funding. The, there were several advantages to our west side underpass. There was the feasibility, which was previously established. There was working with only one railroad road, which I'm sure that you understand the differences in working with multiple. Highest traffic volumes were on Elm, and there was a clear and timely path forward. So, that's what we chose. So, we worked with Mannick and Smith and Quandell, studied all three crossings, or actually four crossings that we were looking at originally, at Elm Stream, Front Street, 7th Street and the east side rails. They studied all of them. And 7th Street, it was discounted due to the adverse impacts on the neighborhood and the poor connectivity and traffic volumes weren't as high. Front had a much higher property, much higher property take, which means we would have had to acquire more properties in order to make it work on Front Street, plus the costs were over $5 million more. Elm was selected for the grant submission. So, the railroad, the railway underpass will also include bike paths and sidewalks. So, the estimated cost of this project, when we submitted for this grant, was $30 million. So, we were extremely lucky that in June of 2023, we were notified from the Federal Rail Authority that we were actually a recipient of this grant. And we received almost $24 million from the federal government to assist with this $30 million project. Obviously, we have to be considerate of, okay, that comes with a 20%, match. And in our local match, we were able to secure another grant from the state infrastructure offer, office to for $2 million. We also understand that the railroads have a statutory mandatory contribution to the local match of, I think it's 1.5 million dollars that they had to contribute. And so, when we looked at it, okay, once we have our money, we are in the hole by 2.5 million dollars. And as we looked at that, you know, we looked at who are our partners and how can we best fund this? And as I listened today to the sheriff's wonderful presentation, counted four times just in your sheriff's office where he talked about partnership with the city. I think that we partnership in an informal basis lots of times in the communication with Mr. Bassonik's office. We work well together, we work well with the different, even on the level of grounds, crews, et cetera, they all work really well together. And we consider ourselves truly partners with our neighbors who happen to reside 100 feet from our front doors. So, part of this, we had to look at what are our likely challenges with this project? Relocation of the Mason Run Drain is something that will have to be done. Coordination with CSX, yes, that's a challenge, but not impossible. Rock excavation and dewatering, impacts to properties, meaning driveways and acquisitions. And there are three residences that, two of them, we will probably have to go through acquisition processes. And we are already pursuing one on the city's dime for one resident because the resident is willing to sell at this point. And recognizing we don't want to go other processes, if we have a willing seller, we should do it now because time is money. And if we have to go through processes in order to procure those properties, it could put, it could put a longer delay before the project could get started. Maintenance of traffic during the time, of course, there's going to be a little bit of a traffic snag when that property, when the actual project is happening. And that's something we have to always consider. But what we're trying, why we are pushing this is because we don't want to let time pass because time is money and we don't want the escalation of the costs to continue to rise. So, we're, because we're really trying to keep it at the $30 million cost. What's our end results? We want an elimination of the delays and better reliability. We want safety improvements. And we want emergency services reliability, including hospital access, aesthetic improvements of that area. It's a transformative project for the entire region. And I've said this over and over again, and my view on this is, this project doesn't just serve the citizens of Monroe. It serves the citizens of Monroe County and those people in the region who decide to come here and visit. And as I said in the operations meeting, we are asking the county to commit $1 million, which is 1/30 of this project total, to help us reach our local match and allow us to be able to send that letter of commitment to the state, to the state who's giving us the $2 million grant as well as the FRA to show them that we have the capacity to do this. And really, to wrap it up, we've been having numerous meetings and we plan numerous meetings regarding the NEPA process in this year. The schedule is the preparatory work, which could start in 2026, which would probably be, the first thing would be the Mason Run Drain relocation, as well as our property acquisitions. The construction will most likely start in 2027 and run through '28. So, we're honestly excited about this project and we're hoping that the commission sees fit, that our partnership together on this project, because it's not just a good project for the city, it's a good project for the county and the region and all of us that live in this area. And I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Robinson. Other questions?
I had a few questions.
Sure.
Yeah, I do agree with you that it's a much-needed project. I guess I, the overarching question I would have is, why are you here? Does the city have its own annual budget?
We do.
Do you have general reserves of at least $1 million?
We do.
Did you receive ARPA funds?
We did.
And what amount?
$11 million.
Do you have any of those remaining?
We do not.
Okay. So, why are you here asking us for $1 million?
Because I would be fair to say, quite honestly, more than 1 in 30 people who traverse that road every day probably reside in the county and not within our city. And it's a true transformative process, not just for the city, this is for the county. It's probably the largest federal grant that this county has received in probably decades. And for us to not be able to make the local match would be a problem. And to address your comment about what we have in our reserves, yes, we are running right now this year about a 20% fund reserve in our reserves. And you referenced it at the Operations Committee, you called it a rainy day fund. And that's exactly what it's meant to be. But for the city of Monroe, which I think everybody in this room, including yourselves, understand that our rainy day may be foreseeable in our city. In 2028, that's when the decommissioning begins of the Monroe Power Plant. And although admittedly, the county will suffer some loss as well in tax revenues, but the city, that tax revenue represents 40% of our general fund. So, our rainy day is preparing for that. We budget conservatively, we're being intelligent with our investments, we're seeking every grant opportunity we can to fund infrastructure at an accelerated rate so that we have things that will last should times become lean. We, myself, along with Mr. Bassonik and our mayor, we meet with DTE on a quarterly basis to try to get updates, to understand what is going to actually happen. Well, we won't know for probably another year to two years exactly what's going to happen and when it's going to happen. But the way they've said it now, and which is what we have to count on, they plan on taking two of the four stacks down in 2028 and total decommissioning by 2032. That's a serious shortfall in our tax base. So, our rainy day fund is designed for our people in the city and the services we provide for our citizens. And that's why we're coming to the county for a project that can be related as a county and city partnership, as well as the region, for us to be able to fund that.
Yeah, respectfully, I appreciate that, the way you plan, but you would be asking us to go into our rainy day fund. We don't have $1 million just to hand out in the budget. In fact, this November, we're projected to have a shortfall. So, in the, you know, in the middle of transitioning from a CFO who's leaving us in October and either searching for another one or promoting from within, we'll also be dealing with a negative shortfall. And it sounds like you're going, well, we have the money, but we want to save our money, so we want to come here and ask for your money. But when does it end with the county? When you don't want to spend your money, you just go to the county, put your hand out You just go to the county, put your hand out, and look, okay, yeah, let's...
Well, I would hate to argue with you. We are spending our money because the remaining 1.5 million, we are paying for out of our other funding.
Yeah.
Yes, we are paying for that. And we've already prepaid for some, some studies, we've already prepaid those in up to $243,000 we just sent to the FRA for reimbursement for money the city has already spent. So I think our money investment is, plus the work it took to get these grants and the success that we've had in getting these grants, merits us being able to come to ask for 1/30th of the project total from the county. And I don't understand your finance situation, but I do know that the residents of the city, including myself, also pay county taxes. So we do contribute to your tax base of the county, not just the city. So I'm hoping that this board, looking at your own financial situation, will decide to yet again partner with our city in this very viable and very important project for all of us.
Yeah, and I would say statutorily, we have, and constitutionally, we have certain things that we can do, maintain county roads, public safety, and we're not coming to the city of Monroe going, hey, can you kick in a few extra bucks for the sheriff's office? Can you kick in some money for the road, the county roads that we have to maintain through the road commission? I would, I would just say, and this is just my opinion, is once you open that door of going to another municipality and saying, sure, you can have this money when we are going to have a shortfall this November, that door will be kicked wide open. And I've already seen a couple on this list that we're going to go through. It looks like we're fixing windows, and we're giving monies to nonprofits, and where will the list end? That's just my thought.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore, Commissioner Levens.
So I represent the other half of Bedford Township, and I take a different approach to this. I see this as an opportunity for partnership. I see the future dividends. I know pretty soon, we're probably going to be having a sit-down as we expand on different services. And right now, we have a partnership where the city police department and our county sheriff's department share a roof. I see this as an ongoing opportunity. I support this initiative. I am, what was the number of, out of the people going through that aren't in the city?
I would say we're asking, I'm sure that it's more than 1 in 30, because we're asking for 1/30th of the total project amounts.
Maybe every time that train, I'm the 1 in 30 that's running late to court, running late for my, my board meeting. And I dare think that on the other side, between that rail and Dundee, could be emergency responders stuck that can't make it to a crisis or something. So I see it's a small ask that we do have, you know, our unreserved funds to do this, and hopefully that's remembered next year, a decade from now, that here from the county, we realize it's the four carnies. It isn't, you know, just some townships I hear that we're, we're trying to do what's best for everyone. So I have, you have my support for this project, period. Thank you, sir.
Additional questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Asper has her hands up.
I'm sorry.
So I do have a question. Like normally, when people come to us for like matching and so on and so forth, they usually actually come to us first and say, hey, we're wanting to do this, there's going to be this kind of a match, and we would be aware of it and so forth. So what I was wondering was, when you were notified in 2023 that you won this, did you have ARPA money or whatever that you could have set aside when you found out that you had won this grant?
At that point in time, our ARPA money was spoken for, as we used 6 million of that for the St. Mary's Garden Sewer Project. And then the other, we were able to use for public safety salaries and wages, and which opened up our general fund for us to do a lot of projects in our city. For example, we gave 1.7 million to the port, which, according to the LINK 2.0 Plan, is an area of focus and one of the top economic drivers and futures for our city. Carnes Park, we redid all of Carnes Park with the added money from our general fund that, because we looked at the way of using our ARPA funds, that would cause less, would cause less government oversight and requirements from the feds on, on actually getting the appropriations for each one of these projects. So once it was made available for public safety, we were able to do that. And then, as well as all of our parks, playscapes, $670,000 we updated, cybersecurity, $200,000, and the MLK Bridge, which was $352,000, which, all of that together combined to $6 million we spent, and that was our $11 million in ARPA funds.
So, I mean, I love parks, I love playscapes, I love all those things, I love gardens, but that's where that money went, instead of saying, maybe we need, we might need this for this really huge project that is, like, like, serious project?
What I tell you, when we got the word that we got the grant, I did start, that was right when I started with the city. I was having conversations with Mr. Bassonic, we were talking about ARPA funds. It was his opinion at the time that ARPA funds were not eligible for a project like this, and that's why we've had continuing conversations about this. So we worked through this, and when the time was appropriate, now it was time to come forth, when we understand all of our funding options, what our true shortfall is at this time, and this was the time to reach out to, to the county for partnership.
I don't think Donna understands here, she's saying gardens, she don't understand the infrastructure for the sanitary sewers. When people can't flush their cars...
I wasn't, I wasn't talking about that.
I've been that every day. And she, when she said gardens, I think she was thinking about we're planting a bunch of gardens. This is the infrastructure...
No, I was talking about St. Mary's.
Make the sewers go.
I know.
Additional questions or comments? Commissioner Asper, additional questions?
I just, I, so there's, there's no possibility that you would consider doing some kind of deal with us where you're repaying this? I mean, I look at my own, my own area, and we have two fire departments that are totally cut off from the freeway, and we have accidents on the freeway all the time. So I do see what you're talking about, but I just hate to be, you know, I just do see, like, like Commissioner Moore said, we just have people coming like at the last minute telling us, oh, we don't have this, we don't have that, and then they think that, that the county is supposed to kind of support their...
Well, I'll be honest with you, and quite honestly, this wasn't last minute.
Okay.
Because now that we found out, we received the grant, we have been in talks with the county.
Okay.
We have expressed what we're, what we're doing. And quite honestly, any other community this round here, because every single community received ARPA money, every city, every township, they all received ARPA money. And quite honestly, every community in this county who has a rail project had an opportunity to put in for this grant. And we did it, and we received it. And it doesn't just help the city, it helps the county. It helps the whole county, the whole region, or anybody who wants to go east and west in that area.
Now, I don't take anything away from your initiative.
Thank you.
Well, I'm, I'm just going to add a few, a few words. I think this is a, an excellent opportunity to partner with the city. I don't, I, I don't think this is a time or a place to critique how they spend their ARPA money or what they do. I have full faith and confidence that they're doing their best work for the citizens of the city of Monroe. I look at it as a, as a great opportunity to partner, just like we want to expand partner opportunities with our townships to the, to the south, and to the north, and to the west, and to the east. We want to, we want to develop these kind of partnerships because that's how the entire county of Monroe is going to have a higher quality of life, there's going to be more opportunities for people, there's going to be drivers for economic development, there's going to be more jobs. So I think this is a perfect opportunity.
Commissioner Swartout.
I'd like to make a motion to support this.
We already have it, it's already on the floor.
I see more comments.
Just, you know, this is a $30 million project, these things don't come around on a yearly basis. It's a big project. And if we say no to this project right now, what are we saying about future projects that come supported by the federal government into Monroe County? We're saying, thank you, but no, thank you, we don't want to take in that extra $24 million. I, personally, I think we're crazy if we don't continue on with this, because this is going to hire a lot of people that live in Monroe County. It's a huge infrastructure project. I can't think of any other infrastructure project currently or in the future. Right now, it's on the, it's out there, that's going to be as large as this, and, and we can accomplish this as a partnership with the city. So I don't see any reason to fight over ARPA funds, who's funding what, and anything else. We have the opportunity to do it, we need to strike now and get it done.
My only point, I don't think it's, I don't know if you're understanding it, is I'm not talking about ARPA funds where they were, where they weren't or were spent. The issue is, is that we have to take care of our own house. You're no longer on the council, you're a county commissioner now.
Correct.
Right? And you oversee a county budget, correct?
I am more...
100%.
You are absolutely correct.
So when we have a downfall, and I'm so glad these are being recorded, so everyone watching can go back to April when I said this, so when we have a downfall or a shortfall in November, we can go back to the tape and say, okay, well, we gave out 200,000 here and a million here, and 75,000 here and 500,000 here. And I'm just saying, I don't think that's the responsible thing to do. It's a very good thing to do, it's a very needed thing to do, but the gentleman just said they could pay for it themselves, but they don't want to.
Commissioner, I appreciate that, but remember where your county seat resides, in the city, right here. If this city fails, so will the county.
Commissioner Moore represents the south side of the city, or the north side of the city, I represent the south side of the city. I think this is a high-quality partnership. I am very comfortable with the county's fund balance right now, so I think we're in a very good position to partner with the city. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Heinzerling?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamoore?
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Swartout?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
No.
Commissioner Levens?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Asper?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is a letter dated March 14, 2025, from Sheriff Troy Goodenough, requesting the addition of an additional sergeant position to the existing staffing plan. Make the motion.
I'll second that.
Moved by Heinzerling, supported by Hoffman. Are there questions on the motion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lamoore?
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Swartout?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Levens?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Asper?
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzerling?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamoore?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is a letter dated April 3, 2025, from Mrs. Donna Cootie, dispatch director, requesting the addition of two additional full-time 911 dispatchers and two part-time 911 dispatchers to the current approved staffing levels. Could I get a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Moved by Hoffman, supported by Lamoore. Are there questions on the motion? Roll call, please.
Chairman Venzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Swartout?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Levens?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Asper?
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzerling?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamoore?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is a letter dated March 28, from Mr. Jeff McBee, human resources director, requesting the reclassification of the courthouse security being placed on the non-union wage scale. Could I get a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Hoffman, supported by Heinzerling. Are there questions on this motion? Yes. Mr. Asper.
So I'm trying to remember to the meeting on Thursday. So what was the, what's the cost of this?
It's for an additional, I think it's $4,184 for the 2025 budget. I'm just filling the airtime because, as Commissioner Moore indicated, we are streaming live, and I didn't want there to be any dead time. HR.
Yeah, you were, I didn't catch exactly, but $4,184.
So is that per...
That's the grand total for the remainder of the year to make this change.
Okay. So was this, I thought this was a, I might be getting this confused, was it so much per hour that they were being increased? Am I talking about the same thing?
Yeah, there's the, the cost to make this change. Each, each officer has the wage. Put them on the pay scale at $2.01 more than they currently receive.
Okay.
So annualized, that's what it comes out to be.
Per, per person?
$2.0 per person, yes.
No, I mean, $4,000 per person then?
Oh, no, that's all combined.
That's the whole ball of wax.
Okay, all right, so being part-time and so forth. So I was thinking that we were paying them about $8 more an hour than we were paying security before, because they are retired deputies. Like, for instance, like courthouse security in Michigan, the average is maybe $18 an hour. And so I thought we already had been paying them $8 or $9 more an hour because they are retired deputies. So did they, did they request this increase?
No, that, that was just a request for...
How did this come about?
I mean, pretty much.
Okay, so this had to do with that, so this had to do with that one incident where they weren't present, that the man was like kicking around the stuff, and do you think he would have done that had they been there?
He wouldn't have got where he did, and if he'd had a gun, there'd have been some dead people, that's for sure.
Well, I mean, there are a lot of ifs, but I'm just saying...
And I know there was a threat up in Judge Nichols' courtroom, and I mean, there's been situations here where we need to have better staff, and if we have our, our retired police officers, they've been doing this their whole life.
Right.
How many times have they had to pull a revolver out to save somebody?
And that's, and that's exactly why...
And that's what we want, we want the best out there.
And that's exactly why we hired them instead of security. So I was just wondering, I guess to Commissioner Moore's point, we keep arranging these ways of giving people raises or this or that, we're not told how much it is before we vote on it. Thank you for letting us know, I appreciate that.
It's in our paperwork.
But, but when we did, when we did...
It's in our paperwork.
Okay, please, I have the floor for a moment here. So, but I mean, with, with the, what, what I, what has to be understood by the people in the county is that when these things come before us, normally, a total amount of money would be told to us previously. And for instance, when we did the bonuses...
Mr. Chairman, at the call point of honor, we had an operations committee where this was fully vetted, and Commissioner Asper was present...
I was here because...
And these numbers were there where it was presented, that it'd be a $4,000 a year increase. You were present for all this information.
Actually, I missed part of it.
And what you're saying is not accurate, it's not accurate.
I'm just saying that we, we were not told, for instance, before the, before we gave bonuses, which were also not requested, and found out that it was another $168,000.
That's not accurate either.
And so that was not told to us beforehand. So I just want to make sure that this is not going to continue as a pattern where we're not getting, because we aren't, for the first time in seven years on this board, we no longer have a structurally balanced budget. And so I'm just wanting to make sure that I'm staying true to my oath.
Let me interject, you, you need to address those kinds of questions to your colleagues on the board, not to Mr. McBee. And that's for, that's for a different discussion at a different time.
No, I am just asking Mr. McBee questions because I want to know how this came about, because no one calls me or tells me.
Okay.
So I had to figure it out this way.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Swartout?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
No.
Commissioner Levens?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Asper?
No.
Commissioner Heinzerling?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamoore?
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item six, be tabled as no longer relevant, considering the board's prior action with regard to accepting the grant numbers and the request this board to seek a public defender's office, request MIDC.
Is there support for this?
I have that support.
Moved by Levens, supported by Lamoore. Are there questions on this tabling of the motion?
I don't think there's a roll call.
It's not?
I don't believe so, the table, it doesn't require a roll call, does it counsel?
Let's have a roll call.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Levens?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Asper?
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzerling?
Yes.[1745.24]
Next item is a probate court security discussion. Could I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the, the motion to, as you know, fully discussed and vetted in the operations committee, to add the additional security window arrangement for particular probate Judge Arnold's courtroom to include, as discussed in operations, up to 4,000 for the architectural costs.
I'll support that.
Just to be clear on the motion, so is the total 4,000, right? I saw some other numbers in the operations report, that's why I'm confused.
Just for an architectural study, and Commissioner Swartout had a question before the meeting that made sense. There were some numbers that were presented, but that was from Grattan Construction from 2017. So we think those numbers are probably not accurate. So if we, if we hire the architect, they'll be able to come back with numbers on what it takes to fix this situation. And what I would like to do, too, is assure Judge Arnold that he can be a part of this when the, when the architect comes in and does his study. And then also, I would also help, ask for the help of our fire marshal, so that we can make sure that everything is up to code on whatever the solution's going to be to make his outer office area and his chambers a safe place. Yes.
For the record, if that 4,000 approximation is not accurate, that'll call into question Commissioner Swartout's, you know, business acumen of how long he's been out of the building trades.
Yeah.
Well, it also answered a different question I had, because the other estimate was 2017, and I believe there's been some ADA compliance changes since then, too.
Yeah, good point.
Don't qualify your expertise. 4,000's the number.
Okay, are there additional comments, concerns, questions on this motion?
My only question on this is, once again, I think it's a reoccurring theme, why wouldn't this be coming out of the judicial budget? Why are we doing this?
I don't have an answer for that. Mr. Masonic, do you have an answer?
Yeah, we're the funding unit, we're responsible for the court facility. That's not something that we would normally include in a court budget. And so this is really related to the facility maintenance. You know, depending on the cost, we wouldn't even capitalize it.
Okay.
Additional questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Leavens?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Asper?
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzerling?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamoore?
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Swartout?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Our next item is St. Joseph's Center for Hope Emergency Funding. Rebecca, do you, do you want to give a report before we were to make a motion on this?
Yes, actually, I have a very wonderful update for you guys.
Okay.
My name is Rebecca Turner, with St. Joseph's Center for Hope Cafeteries. Right now, I'm asking, I talked with David, Commissioner Swartout, earlier today. We have our funding right now through June 15. From HPSM, they found alternative funding within the next month and a half. Hopefully, we'll find out other funding sources. So we would like to approach the board at another date if we need the funding, but we're going to try to see if we can actually solve this ourselves.
That's great news.
So, Mr. Chairman, with your pleasure, just like we had for the feasibility study, I would make a motion to table this.
I'd second that.
And I have a second, and I just comment again, this is a, an example of partnerships, reaching out to the community to know that we're available to help people with the lifelines. We were never intended to, you know, be your forever funding source. We just realized that the good works that you do, and wanted to give you the tools and resources, that way you could find your, your funding and be that available support when you needed it most. And I could, I was welcoming to the, I'm on the raw board now. So I'm kind of excited to be a conduit between the recovery groups to this board, just like how Commissioner Swartout is with MCLP. Each of us have our little niches where we can educate each other and be better team members with, you know, not just this board, but our other partners. So thank you for your good works.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, this is great news, and this just is, is an outstanding example why Monroe County is a high-quality place to live, that everybody helps each other. And so we wish you the best, and keep us posted.
I will definitely keep you posted. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there questions on Commissioner Leavens' motion, supported by Lamoore? We'll do a roll call.
Was that to table it? I'm sorry.
Correct.
Okay.
Not needed.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Asper?
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzerling?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamoore?
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Swartout?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Leavens?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item, court's request to allow court recorders to use the printing department to produce transcripts, with the court recorders reimbursing the county for the production of costs. Could I get a motion, please?
We'll make the motion.
Moved by Heinzerling, supported by Hoffman. Are there questions on this motion? Commissioner Asper?
Yes. So I was thinking that there may be a problem with this, because with outside printing, they have to collect taxes. And I don't think we have the ability to do that, or we don't have a procedure to do that yet. So I would just like to know if anyone has information about that also. Some information came that maybe reimbursements can be as much as 90 cents a sheet. And I just want to make sure that we don't end up being the cheap ones that go ahead and do printing, and then somebody else sells that work for 90 cents a sheet or something. So I just don't want the, you know, the county to be in a situation where we have to set up something more elaborate to pay the, you know, pay the tax that we collect.
Additional comments?
Well, that was something that we discussed in committee, because there was both the rate schedule, that I guess was being fussed out with the statute, and then we directed it to finance's attention for the, the sales tax issue, and so here's our finance person.
Correct. So we are set for the sales tax issue. You're right, we would be charging sales tax.
Okay.
Because we're selling to private citizens, and we may be cheaper than a private entity. We are covering costs, just like we would in any other case. So we worked it out, and it's 12 cents per page. We also worked with the courts to get a standard form for the transcribers to use, so that it's consistent, it's efficient for us to use. We've got a process in place that, you know, though, part of the statute, they can't use governmental equipment for this, so they wouldn't be able to use their work computer, their office product, they wouldn't be able to email with a county address. So we've got all of that addressed, and we've got a process in place. We talked to the courts, we've got two of the three responses. They're all in agreement with it, so I think we're set.
You've done that in record time. I am like so proud of you guys.
Well, the thing is, this was all discussed in committee, and this was, pardon me, this is why we have the committee.
Oh, there was, right, a lot of work in the, in the background to get the form together and work with printing, and make sure that we got the correct cost, that we were doing everything appropriately. The statute does govern the minimum price that we pay, so even if it's, is it 375?
375 for the first.
For the first page, it's 12 cents for us to print it.
Okay, that's good.
Thank you for your work on this.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Lamoore?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Just have a couple of questions regarding what you mentioned about selling to private entities. Is that, am I correct?
A private citizen.
Okay. And is that, being that I'm a taxpayer and I'm also a printer, so you understand my concern in that, as far as being in competition to another private entity? Is that a concern here, or is that a problem legally, I'd ask?
Has Phil been able to address the legal question?
I, I talked to Phil about it, and, you know, this law was really put in place to take away the court use of its materials and facilities for the court reporters, which are really somewhat working on their, on their own behalf. But we have to remember, this is for the court system. We're trying to partner with our courts, to help the courts. And I don't think the court reporters are required to come to the county to seek their printing, but they can. If they want to go elsewhere, I guess they can do that. So I, I don't see a problem with it, to be honest. And I get that there is competition, but the court reporters don't, they're not required, I don't believe, to go through this system.
They're not required to.
And the costs are fair. And as far as sales tax, I really can't comment on that. You've determined because it's a private entity coming in, which the court reporters are private entities, they're coming in, you know, 1099s and what have you, and then they are going to be charged the sales tax, the same as they would with a private printing party.
Correct.
Additional questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Asper?
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzerling?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamoore?
No.
Commissioner Venzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Swartout?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Leavens?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is the Monroe County Bar Association Historical Pictures Displayed. Could I get a motion on this, please?
I'll make that motion to approve updating the Monroe County Bar Association Historic Pictures to be relocated in their original places of display outside the courtrooms and in the courtroom halls.
Is there support?
Support.
Moved by Leavens, supported by Lamoore. Are there questions on this motion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Heinzerling?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamoore?
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Swartout?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Leavens?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Asper?
Yes.
Motion carries.
In our final item, the Standing Ethics Committee discussion, there was no action taken. There really wasn't much of a discussion at the operations meeting regarding the Standing Ethics Committee discussion. Does anybody here have any comments regarding the Standing Ethics Committee?
I don't know if we got an appointee, or who's going to appoint him.
Well, my feeling is that I think it's absolutely necessary for us to establish a Standing Ethics Committee. What I think would serve us best would be to wait for the independent investigation to be completed, and wait for suggestions and recommendations and advice to come back from, from the independent investigation. Okay. All right, no action required on this. We have no public hearings. No old business. Old business is the Michigan Indigenous Defense Department update. Do we have an update, Mr. Gantos?
Hi, Mary Gantos, Indigenous Defense. No, I don't really have an update.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. No new business. This is our, our second segment of public commentary. Are there citizens who wish to address the board?
Mr. Rowley? Mr. Chairman, Mike Rowdy, 10458 Michigan Avenue, Erie, Michigan. I am Erie Township Supervisor. And on behalf of the Erie Township Board and the Residency Township, I want to thank the county board for committing to the letter of intent for the ARPA funds. This is going to have significant long-term impact on Erie Township, Southeast Monroe County. It is, it's, it's going to really shoot some life into our town, in our community. This wasn't done alone. I do want to take the time to thank Bedford Township Board. With their leadership back in November, we jointly extended the sewer district agreement to service Mason School. So that is significant, not just for, you know, this ARPA funding, but if we can manage to find the other $8 million through either state or federal aid to get the school helped out, so that is a great, real kind of business alliance. Shaun, TC, have really worked hard behind the scenes, Mr. Masonic as well. Tom Graeme, Phil Goldsmith, for helping articulate a lot of the agreements that have been put in place. Phil and Tom have been really great to work with. I'd have to, I'd be remiss if I didn't say Dave Leach out in the, on the audience, Dave, Matt Snell, fantastic to work with. And they're going to be, you know, obviously, working with us a lot over the next year and a half to get this project done. Grain Commissioner Dave Thompson, and Deputy Grain Commissioner.
Tim Sirgo.
Tim Sirgo. Thanks, Mike. It's just, it's right in front of me, too. Great to work with as well. And finally, the, you know, my board, my township board. It's, I've been on the township board close to 17, 18 years. Now as a trustee, and now supervisor, and, and this is a board of vision that is looking forward for our community. And hopefully, in the spirit of talking about collaboration and partnership, working with Bedford and the county to improve the life and the quality of life, and not just Erie Township from Monroe County. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens that wish to address the board?
Thank you, Commissioner David Leach, Major Director of Monroe County Road Commission. As we're all aware, we recently went through the process of municipal bonding, and I just wanted to come here tonight to say thanks to several people, Patrick McNally and his team, Carrie Blanchett with PFM, her team, Jennifer Job, Sue Meyer, their team, Jesse with the Treasures Department, and Mike Masonic, thank you for all that they've done, helping us through the process. Wonderful job, and great work with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Any other public comment?
I don't see any.
Mr. LaVoy. Are you going to bring some levity?
I might.
I noticed Ms. LaVoy wasn't sitting next to you this evening.
Yeah, she's worried about what I might do.
Okay.
Everybody asked me, is it something you did? I said, no, it's what I might do. So Bill LaVoy, 225 Maywood, Monroe, Michigan. The reason why I stopped and looked over there is because last time I got to speak, somebody made a little comment when I was getting up. And I just want to bring that to the board's attention, that that's happened to me several times at board meetings, where I get up to say something, and somebody makes a comment. And then also, I think during members' time, sometimes, I have some members who I understand, I, I, you know, I understand comedy and levity and the rest, but sometimes, some of the comments, I think, go past that. So just want to bring that up. Maybe that should be part of the ethics. I can't respond to those. I don't get the last word. I get it, I wasn't elected. I understand that. The people up here can say what they want. But I just wanted to point that out. So on, the only other thing is, and it's, and I kind of mentioned it last time, I guess there's two things. One is, I still, there was discussion on security, right? I asked again, before I went through the metal detector, whether there were any court proceedings going on. And I'm not armed, I want to point that out, but I believe that as a citizen who has, is actually in the process of getting concealed pistols license, that I should be able to conceal carry in a public government meeting. I'm saying that and being emphatic about it. I understand the nuances of the law, and that there are court proceedings that go on in this building, but I think that needs to be addressed at some point. And again, I don't want to be the one tased or arrested out there, because as I said last time, here's the levity. There's probably people who would love to see that, but I believe it's a constitutional right of mine. And lastly, is the whole felon thing that I talked about, that's still in the works. We were kind of waiting for something to happen with the Ethics Committee, but now I guess we're just going to go forward and just do. I think it's interesting, because we have board members up here who also have budgetary questions. So I think it's completely feasible that there would be members of the public who aren't necessarily paying attention to all the public information that may have some questions regarding how county money is spent. That's it. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, we have no announcements. We'll move into members' time. Commissioner Moore?
Yes. Excuse me. First, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for honoring our bylaws and allowing us to break those consent item, agenda items down, so we could both vote on them individually. I appreciate that. I think it helps all of us to have a discussion on some of those things that are very unique. And I just wanted to say, I see the mayor here in attendance. I'm absolutely, I mean, fantastic job on getting that grant, all the work that went into it, being able to secure that amount of money. I think it was just that last $1 million we disagreed on. So I think it'll be great for the community. I appreciate you coming here and asking. Just because we disagree on how it should be funded, don't take that personally. I would also say, well, just also, too, because, you know, 1/30 of the project was the number I keep hearing, but as a county commissioner, I hear 4% of your reserve balance. And that's, that's how I'm thinking as a county commissioner. And then, I guess, just respectfully, I would say, you know, when you have a sitting county commissioner, like Dawn Asper, asking questions to the Director of the Human Resource Department, who reports to us, and then the chairman says, you shouldn't be asking him questions, I just say, I have to respectfully disagree, and let's tread lightly on that, because that's what we're here for, is for public meeting, for public talk. We need to know what our second floor is doing, and Dawn Asper has every right, Commissioner Asper has every right to ask him any question she really wants to. With that, I'll pass.
Commissioner Swartout?
I'll pass.
Commissioner Lamoore?
Thank you, Chairman. As Commissioner Moore eloquently put, I'm happy to see it live streaming on right now. Great to have it for transparency and everything that's going on in our community, so people can see us up here and see what we're trying to do for the county and. So people can see us up here and, and see what we're trying to do for the county and making things happen. And there's nothing hiding here. It's, it's all out front. So if you have any problems, view us on YouTube. Going back to the vote for the $1 million for the city of Monroe, Commissioner Moore, I just want to let you know, my first responsibility is for the county of Monroe. There is no doubt in that. I never doubted that one bit. But also remember that I represent the city of Monroe and Frenchtown Township. So I also have to fight for them equally as well. So that's all I have, my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Heinzerling?
I'll pass.
Commissioner Asper?
Well, I would like to thank Commissioner Moore for articulating my position as well. Nothing personal as far as Monroe is concerned. But I do apologize for my coughing tonight. I just, I'm so sorry for that part.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yeah, thanks for everybody coming out. And I got one quick question to our roadman back there. If this is possible, of course, it's right in my district between Ida and Summerfield. We have a bridge on Wells Road that the county showed up and drove some spikes in the road and closed it off. And it was just some road, some water damage from the big rain we had. So it just needs some buildup, I think, on the shoulders. I went out and looked at it. The cover itself isn't rotten. What I was going to say, I am willing, if you guys, because the townships don't have no money to make the repair. Yeah, sure, come on. Because I'm willing to put my company up there and take care of it so we can open the road back up. I can open it up tomorrow if you guys let me.
Yeah, I, I'm fully aware of Wells Road. It is split between two townships. And this is a local road, so we do look for the township to fund this. We are fully aware of the closure of this road. My county highway engineer has inspected it and it is rotted underneath there. And with the washout on the side of the road, we have a liability and responsibility to protect the motor in public. So that's why the road is closed. We have secured contracts with both townships involved and it is in the works. Obviously, Mistig is in the, in the process. The materials are ordered. So our crews will be replacing that real soon, weather permitting, next week with, with, you know, good weather.
That's what I like to hear.
So we're, we're very well aware of it. We don't want to close a road down. But we have, we do have to do the best in our interest for liability reasons, safety reasons. God forbid a school bus gets hung up in that and, and it collapses. But it is, it is truly deteriorated when you go inside there and you look.
But I do know the, I was here in three and four months and this is a main traveled road.
It, we understand that.
I'm willing to supply all the labor. If you put the product out there, if you don't have the...
If you want to come on out and help us out, we, we, we do have it scheduled.
I will do it.
It's, it's not a labor issue at this point in time. We'll, we'll be happy to have your, your equipment out though. Come on out and help us out. But this, this has been known to be deteriorating over several years. And we, when we do have these, we do advise the townships involved that, you know, we look for the funding from them. So we try to be proactive with it. So it's not a, a closure that's closed down for a longer period of time. When it gets to this point, we have no choice but to close the road and then we're with the townships involved, so.
But now if the townships are wobbling so bad, can we, do we have that 51 money for that?
Townships, townships are on board. The contracts are signed.
Because I know I talked to Mr. Metz.
The townships, the townships contracts are signed now. Yeah. They, they were just recently signed.
If that's a stall, I can, I can be out there.
Act 51 is a little different. Another conversation. I'd be happy to have that with you anytime.
No, we're good. Thank you. Thank you. Don't mean to put you on the spot, but people are on my phone driving me nuts.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoffman. Commissioner Leven, Vice Chair Levens.
So Mr. Leach from the Road Commission's here. Our sheriff spoke. This is our first livestreamed meeting. And so I'd be remiss if I didn't give accolade and acknowledgement of all of the many department heads. We have Andy from the, you know, the museum, Mary from MIDC. I'm going to miss some people, so I apologize. Jeff HR, you know, Sue from Finance, she spoke. But all of our elected officials, our prosecutor had nothing on the agenda today. And Mr. York, he has suffered through all of our long deliberations as well as our treasurer, Jesse. So it really takes the whole team. I mean, just one of the messages when we conclude, we've had some spirited, you know, debate, but we all came together and advanced the county's business and we're a big partnership, our different community members, our department heads, our, our county elected folks. So with that, I just say a good night, everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Bassonic?
I have nothing to add. I normally would have sent your report yesterday, but I was out of town for a few days and, and right through that, when I got back, things were piled up. So we'll get another one soon, unfortunately.
Okay. I will pass. The meeting is now adjourned.
Now, I was a younger man when we had these marathon meetings. I didn't need a little permission break. If we're going to keep having...